Before we begin the staff presentation, has the applicant said everything they want to say up to this point? Is there anything else you want to add?
Not at this time.
I mean, there'll be time to come back later, sure. Mr. Dolmer.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and zoning board. My name is John Dolmer. I'm here for a quick introduction and to set the stage. Mrs. Gensen will be providing the staff report and staff opinions. But as you can see, this is your review staff. I don't take personally that she didn't include me on this slide. I'm sure that was not an oversight.
But you'll talk about it later.
We'll talk about that later.
What did he say?
And...
Well, that was... There's an announcement coming.
There'll be announcement later today. I did not think that Ms. Crespo would be covering overview and history of downtown, but I had intended to cover that briefly. This is kind of where we are. The plan that you're looking at today in terms of the sub-districts and the lot layout, that came as an outlier of all of these plans. And most specifically, this RMPK plan was the genesis of what you're looking at, what we have recently amended with the Terry Street sub-district. We have also, on the public side, built parks, land banked parcels for redevelopment, looked at financing options with county, improved streetscape, and then prepared research in the form of a white paper and subsequent presentations to council. So now we are at the final bullet point, private investment. And this really is, well, at least this particular version of the zoning board's first look at a downtown project. The second one, really overall, the first one being the Mosaic or Dean Street multifamily project further south from this property. And that's kind of where we are today. Before Mrs. Gensen gets started, I just wanted to have a quick couple of statements with you on FEMA. And I know that there's been a lot of terms thrown around, and I've watched more than one set of eyes glaze over. So just as a quick walkthrough on what's going on, a portion of Old 41 is within a flood zone. And that flood zone requires a property to be built to an elevation of 10. That elevation is not 10 feet above natural grade. That elevation is from NAVD, which is basically sea level, plus or minus, 10 feet above that elevation. Most of this property, if I'm not mistaken, is somewhere around elevation six to seven. So you would be looking somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six feet possible of fill if we were to look at having them built to the elevation that FEMA had established. What we are looking to do, and what was recently done in the adopted comprehensive plan change, was to measure the height of a building and to start buildings at 18 inches higher than the crown of the road, adjacent roadway. And the reason being is we just spent a lot of money. Ms. Crespo showed 20 million. You could bring that figure up closer to 30, depending on your calculation, for downtown improvements. What we're not wanting to do is have those sidewalks installed and then have everybody build up almost a floor above natural grade. So we're trying to have buildings start as close to that sidewalk grade as possible. And as a result, for portions of the redevelopment area in the flood zone, those buildings will be flood-proofed. They will not be built to an elevation to withstand flood. They will be putting panels up or some other infrastructure that will protect them, knowing that that will be how those buildings keep the floodwaters out should they rise. And I just want... Are there any more questions on flood, or how we're calculating this, or how that plays out with this particular application?
No questions from the board?
Okay. And I will vacate the podium and allow Mrs. Gensen to answer all of your questions.
Before you start, I have a disclosure, an ex parte disclosure, that I need to make for the record. For I was contacted and just want to make notation of that.
And if you haven't filed the paper, if you just state the nature of the contact...
I received a phone call just commenting... The only comment that was made is from somebody that I know quite well, and that he wanted me to realize how important our decision would be today.
And that's great. You'd need to disclose the name of the person?
That would be Rex Sims.
Okay.
And then I was also approached in the parking lot by Kathy...
McGrath?
McGrath, thank you. Had a brain hemorrhage there. And just want to disclose that.
I appreciate it. Now, this would be the time for everybody to do their disclosure. That way, if either staff or the applicant wish to ask you questions as to any nature of the content, they have the ability to do so before you make your decision-making.
Are there any disclosures from the board?
So no one else was talked to by council members or by members of the individuals or public? Okay.
Good morning. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen with Community Development. Just before I start, I want to go ahead and officially submit the staff report and backup documentation into the record. I also, this morning, gave the clerk and city attorney and staff's outside counsel copies of two letters of support that were mailed back into staff as part of our notification procedures. So I wanted to go ahead and place those in the record as well. Just to start, just wanted to express that staff is in agreement with the applicant's presentation with some minor modifications. Those being, first, the city's downtown redevelopment plan as it exists today, based on the RMPK plan, was actually adopted in 2006 as part of a comprehensive plan, map, and text amendment. The Land Development Code, which actually mandated redevelopment or development in compliance with that plan, was adopted in 2009. Before that time, it was really an optional process. So I wanted to go ahead and clarify that. And also, we'll explain later in this report, just some of those general areas where there's disagreement still among staff and the applicant. Moving on, as we explained in our executive summary, the data analysis that we reviewed in compliance with the Conference of Plan and Land Development Code, staff, based on our recommended conditions, did find the requests consistent with the Conference of Plan and the Land Development Code. Therefore, we did recommend approval with conditions as prepared in the staff report. As explained by the applicant, there are some areas of disagreement in terms of the height, scale, and massing for buildings four and five, based on the existing and potentially planned redevelopment areas of the single-family to the north and to the south. We did go over a little bit today on the schedule of uses, and with some of the modifications based on the discussion with the applicant and the board, we'll let you know where we kind of land on those areas. But I think the zoning board had some great recommendations in terms of the restaurants and the outdoor dining and our limitations to kind of find a really nice, happy medium to allow those uses. Just to go over some of the nuts and bolts, if you will, as the applicant stated on the record, this property is redeveloping their site based on the Terry Street sub-district, which, as they explained, was adopted by council last week. We are in the process of preparing the adoption package to send up to the State Land Planning Agency and suspect to do so by midweek. As they explained, the zoning for the property is very specific on the types of uses that could be allowed in this area. And because they're wanting to do vertical mixed-use development in some of these areas, they really needed to go ahead and exercise the ability to blend densities and intensities under the Terry Street sub-district to go ahead and move forward with their vision for the redevelopment project. And also, as they explained, that the uses on the property as it exists today, only one of the properties has actual development on it, which is the Maria's Restaurant on the west side of US 41. The other properties remain vacant. Process and procedure, and again, I'll try not to duplicate, but as they explained, the Terry Street sub-district does allow for the opportunity to blend densities and intensities in a unified mixed-use plan development, which is what the applicant has requested today. And again, we will evaluate density, intensity, and the types of uses through this rezoning process to evaluate the applicant's request. The comprehensive plan, it was not a mechanism or tool that was a use-by-right. It was a process that allowed staff to evaluate a redevelopment proposal and determine if it was appropriate, based on the findings in the Land Development Code. So in your staff report, what I really tried to do for the zoning board and also members of the general public is to provide hyperlinks or code citations so individuals who are not familiar with the zoning process or zoning terminology could go ahead and look at those sections of the code and understand the process that staff goes through when we evaluate these types of requests. So you'll see the code sections right there, our process for reviewing applications, when we're required to find applications sufficient and scheduled for hearings, and why sometimes requests are brought forward before the board, and why there might be some areas of disagreement. Next is the standard of review, findings, and conclusions. And that is really what I say is the framework that we use when we evaluate these requests. And I'll pop it on the next screen. Now, these are the findings that I would like for you to keep in mind as you go through this presentation and when you listen to the applicant's presentation. These are the findings that you need to ask yourself, are they consistent with these 10 items? And there's 10 because this is a plan development, so there's two extra criteria when you're evaluating a rezoning request to a plan development. Number one is you can condition them, and also, there's deviations that are being requested. So these are included in your staff report for review, but I would like for you, again, to keep these in mind as we move forward with the presentation. I wanted to briefly touch on the evolution of the master concept plan, just so the board understands what this project originally looked like. When the application was originally transmitted to our office in 2016, this was the first version of the master concept plan. And you'll obviously see, there's still some components that are still consistent, even based on the current master concept plan. But when we first had this plan submitted to our office, this really started a dialogue with planning and zoning staff and the city architect. We really liked the idea and the redevelopment potential for downtown, but we still wanted to better understand how the project interrelated to itself with the downtown. What were the civic components? How is it a real contiguous project? So we recommended that the applicant engage in additional site planning and also some master planning with their consultant and any other consultants that they might need. And that lent itself to additional consulting information with Waldrop Engineering on the block forum, which Ryan Mikowski presented to you today, and also engagement with PK Studios for the proposed master concept plan as it is today. As I explained, when we first met with the applicant, this was kind of into the second round of sufficiency comments. We wanted to really understand, what is it that this project's going to look like? Show us some renderings. Show us some elevations. So the applicant did come in with some proposed elevations. We had a great conversation with our city architect about architectural items such as he likes to use the word "dialogue." Show me how the project's going to relate on the ground. How does it relate to its environment? And Sam Vincent is here if you have additional questions on that. But you can see, again, the evolution of the architectural renderings. And this is just one example of what the building initially... These are the concepts they were thinking. And then when they retained PK Studios, these are what the renderings and elevations turned into. So again, just the evolution of the design. Again, the original proposal on your left, and then the ultimate vision on your right. Again, another concept, they always envisioned a civic public component to really draw the project in, which is not a requirement of downtown, mind you. But that was really important to the applicant, was to create a civic open space to really bring the project together. And then with the retainment of PK Studios, they went ahead and prepared the elevations to show how everything worked together with the promenade, starting on Old 41, coming through up to the top, going across Old 41 into the Public Space Plaza, which is on the other side of Center Avenue. And then this is just your bird's eye view, if you will, of the plan in itself. So you can really see those components of retaining the civic space, having the promenade, terminate the multifamily building, but really tie into the mixed-use buildings as well, really trying to make it a unified cohesive project. Now we get into the actual master concept plan. And again, I won't really try to comment again on those areas that Ms. Crespo explained in her hearing. But you can tell with the plan, you have the mixed-use buildings, one, two, and three in purple, the multifamily buildings in your pink. You'll see the pedestrian pathway system that's proposed in the red dotted hash lines. The deviations are marked in the yellow triangles. So you'll see deviation one here on the main street thoroughfares, based on council's input to go ahead and minimize canyonization. And then you have your deviation two for setbacks, where it would currently deviate from current code in terms of really wanting those buildings up on the street. But based on the site plan and incorporating this public space, it really pushes the buildings back.
Excuse me, before you leave this slide, if I recall correctly, the applicant filed a master concept plan on June 19th of this year. How did that change from the prior...
The only change that happened was we asked them to go ahead and, for example, the plan designation, we asked them to put the Terry Street sub-district on...
Okay. So there was no substantive change?
Nothing very substantive at all.
Okay.
And then, too, with the calculations, we wanted them to show what's the maximum floor ratio, based on the new Terry Street sub-district.
Thank you.
So that's really the biggest change that occurred. The schedule of uses, we had some discussion on that. So originally, the applicant had provided us a schedule of uses, which essentially, when I looked at it, it was it allowed all these uses by right. And when you go to our Land Development Code, we actually list the permitted uses in a table by sub-area. And some of these, you will see, had P for permitted. But then you get down to some of our other uses where a nightclub would be administrative or special exception. And if we approved those schedule of uses as proposed, then that would allow nightclub by right. And I know that was not the applicant's intent, so that's why you'll have the schedule of uses conditioned as they are in the staff report versus attaching the applicant's. It's just we want to go ahead and utilize the code that's in place for the schedule of uses. And then in those areas where, for example, you have the mixed-use Building Three, which is most of the area of discussion today, the reason why I want to really limit some of those more intense uses or uses that would have what we call secondary impacts, is because in the RMPK plan, this area was envisioned as multifamily. And I think they did that as a means to buffer and minimize commercial impacts in this area, step it down, have your multifamily here, and then have some multifamily transition into the single-family along Terry Street. So when we went ahead and evaluated the opportunity to blend and allow some mixed uses, we really wanted to limit those more nuisances or nuisance uses that could be a nuisance if not monitored and enforced properly. So that's why you'll see some special exception uses as recommended by staff. I do think with the outdoor dining and the restaurants, based on the discussion here with the board, staff would be amenable to considering allowing those uses based on the board's discussion of they could only operate between 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Staff was just concerned about people talking really loud, having a great time, which is what we want them to do. But when you're right next to someone's home, we really want to respect those uses that are there. But based on those discussions today, I think that's a good compromise to do the 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. With the specialty food retail uses, staff's biggest concern was the impacts if, once the store closes up and they're going to go to the dumpster and dump trash. So I just didn't want those types of uses intruding into the neighborhood. But if we want to maybe look at a condition or better understand where their solid waste enclosures are going to be, maybe we can go ahead and rectify those issues. But those are kind of the reasons why we wanted to have more of a control on what uses took place in that building. It's just their proximity to residential. Next, with deviation one, staff is in agreement with the applicant's analysis and has no objection if the city council and the zoning board does agree with the applicant's condition. It definitely is a tool to minimize canyonization. Sam Vincent also reviewed this deviation request, and he had no objections as well. So staff does support this deviation as requested. Some of the benefits are, you know, you minimize the canyonization, you get more sunlight into your public spaces, into the outdoor dining areas. So there definitely is a public benefit to approve this deviation. The next deviation, for deviation two, is the building setbacks. Based on the applicant's site design, staff had no objections to this deviation as requested. It definitely creates a wonderful civic space. It's a public amenity. It enhances the project, which is one of the criterias for deviations. There's no adverse impact to public health, safety, or welfare, so that's another criteria that we look at. Another criteria that we're looking to implement into the code is what public benefit is the deviation providing? And because there is this wonderful promenade and civic open space that's not required as part of a downtown redevelopment project, it definitely is a public benefit in this instance as designed. Compatibility analysis, this is just a bird's eye view of the project, looking north on Old 41, Terry Street. It is an older area, so you will not see the roundabout. This was a really tough case for staff to look at. And some of you that were here for the Oakland project, we encountered some of the same themes with you have a future land use plan that really wants to contemplate redevelopment, but you have existing uses that are there, and how do you protect those uses until that area transitions? So some of the conditions that we formulated, especially with Building Four and Five, is just a result of protecting those existing uses as they exist and as they're planned, especially in the south, and then to the north as they exist. So it's that balance. So you'll see those... You'll see conditions that are in the staff report in terms of how can we go ahead and minimize those concerns? And that's listed further in, I believe it's condition four. And that's what other transitioning techniques can we look at? Can we look at lower story heights? Can we look at stepping the building back? Can we look at the articulation of windows, living walls, things like that, just to really soften those edges on the northern and southern property lines? So starting on the north, so here you have the Seattle Upholstery that's located in our commercial sub-area three, which is a strictly commercial sub-area that allows a maximum intensity of a 1.2-floor area ratio. So with the mixed use next to commercial, and hopefully this will redevelop to its maximum potential, and we'll get another few-story buildings, or we're not sure what DPZ will come back with. But we had no compatibility issues or concerns as it related to that edge. With the gas station on the south side of Terry Street and on the north side, gas stations are definitely a necessity that we need, but obviously, for our gateway into downtown, we're hoping those areas, too, will transition. And we're hoping DPZ will really come up with a great concept for that gateway. So envisioning that, we really had no compatibility concerns with those areas. When you get to the northern edge on Center Street, next to Buildings Four and Five, that's where we had some concerns, and that's why we placed some of the recommendations we did on the building height and massing. This is a nice little cottage home. It is historic. There's a little plaque on the front. It is in an area, though, this is where I talk about how we balance existing versus planned. So it's in our sub-area four district, and that district allows multifamily. I believe it's 10 units an acre with up to five bonus density units. And it could be built with a 55-foot-tall building by right. But right now, it's a single-family home. It's a historic home. So until that area transitions, staff was not comfortable with recommending approval for a larger building. So that is why we had provided the conditions that we did until that area transitions. You know, if DPZ comes back with maybe some other recommendations on how we can better transition those uses, we can definitely look into that. But at this time, we just didn't think it was appropriate.
Can I stop you there for a second, please? Are you suggesting that in a transitional neighborhood, to balance the interests, you have to wait till the neighborhood transitions? Isn't that a logical problem?
It's very logical, and it's a tough problem. And the fact is, right now, if the applicant didn't have to go through this rezoning process, they could go and erect a 55-foot-tall building with 15 units to the acre. And we, as staff, wouldn't have a mechanism to say no. So it's... But we're also giving them the opportunity to blend uses and blend densities. So, you know, it's a very unique and challenging exercise.
As we go forward with this hearing, if both sides could address for us, what is the best way we can balance the interests here? We are in a transitional, not a stable neighborhood. There has to be a first project somewhere. We can't get to number two before we get to number one. What's the best way to balance this? Maybe the city architect at a later time, not now.
Sure. And what I asked the applicant to do, and as the applicant explained on Friday, we did meet, and I said to them, you know, "Show me an example in a downtown where we have this situation. Make me comfortable." The exhibit that they provided with the drawing with the box of what could be redeveloped there definitely made me think, okay, I understand. But show me an example where the two can exist together, and maybe I might feel differently. So until I get that information, I'm sticking with my recommendation as it is. I know there's some areas in Fifth Avenue where there were four-story buildings next to single-family, but it was probably a building that was built maybe in the '70s or '80s, so different building techniques. But I am open to reconsidering if I saw something that addressed those concerns that I'm anticipating.
Fair enough. Mr. Therya.
Mr. Chairman, may I follow up on that?
Please.
I've done a lot of compatibility work, including trying compatibility cases. And I think you've hit the nail on the head. There are two spectrums when you look at compatibility. If you have a stable neighborhood that's not in transition. For example, if this was not a redevelopment area, and that single-family house was not located in a redevelopment area, and somebody was proposing a four-story or higher building next to the single-family home, the protection that the city would typically provide to that single-family home would be fairly great because the neighborhood is homogeneous, it's stable, it hasn't been designated for redevelopment. On the other spectrum is kind of what you have here. The city council has already made the policy call to put this area into a redevelopment. So it's essentially stated that this area will be in transition. It will change to something else. When you look at compatibility, the kind of the overarching thing that you're trying to do is that a new use will not adversely affect an existing use. Here, the council has already decided that the new uses and the existing uses are going to change because you're trying to redevelop the area. So I would argue, from the spectrum of a single, homogeneous, stable neighborhood, that's your highest level of compatibility protection. I think that your lowest level of compatibility protection, if you think of it as a spectrum, is when you don't have a stable, homogeneous area. You have an area that's been designated for redevelopment, and redevelopment comes, and redevelopment can be on the parcel that's immediately adjacent to the redevelopment. So if you think of it as a spectrum, I think the highest is the stable, non-transition. The lowest is when you have a redevelopment area that's already been designated.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Question. Didn't someone say that house that we're looking at is a historic house?
Yep.
It has a placard on the outside. I have not conferred with my historical planner. I do not believe it's on one of our maps, because the only one that did come up when we did our sufficiency review was actually the Maria's Restaurant, and they actually had it removed by the Historic Preservation Board. So...
So I can look into it a little bit more, but I know there is a placard on the building itself.
If it's part of, been accepted as a historical monument, then there are some very strict requirements on what can happen at that piece of property. And that's where you make an application and you...
Right, the specials.
Get designated, and there's things you can and cannot do on that site without their blessing.
Right, depending if it's an actual structure versus the property itself?
I think the question, sir, is it on the historic registry? And I think Jade Sweet just indicated it's not.
Thank you, Jade.
It's not. No, officially not.
It is a delightful little house, though.
Historic in nature.
Okay, on the eastern boundary, did not have much concerns based on the applicant's proposal, but just to go over the area in itself, this is the property immediately to the south of Building Two. It received some facade grant, monies from the city to go ahead and update its facade. So you'll see the more updated picture here. Then just to the south of that property is actually, I don't know if there are actually hotels or apartments, but there are two-liner buildings right here. And this is actually all one parcel here. And then there's a little house in the back, but we'll get into that on another analysis of the picture of that property. This is actually looking at Lightner Creek, going west. This is the boundary between the single-family home here, and then the vacant land. And then this is the vacant part of, part of the property at Center Avenue and Terry Street.
Excuse me, checking. Could you, on the lower picture of the Lightner Creek, can you show us the property that we're looking at for redevelopment on that photo? Can you just kind of, is that, that's it?
Correct.
Okay. So does the back of that property, is it overlooked the creek?
It does. And what's interesting, when you look at the RMPK plan on the opposite side of Lightner Creek, they actually have it designated as multifamily. And I think I'll touch on that in the next slide. We always thought it was interesting how the RMPK plan carved out the single-family homes here, but then the multifamily just seemed a little, I wouldn't say disjointed, but usually with boundaries, you always look for a natural feature that kind of divides it. So my thoughts are, is that maybe because these properties were owner-occupied, not rentals, that's why they carved those out to remain as a single-family. But typically, you'll see areas divided by natural features, or an artificial, like a roadway, something more hard-to-find. So at the southern boundary, you'll see again some of these repeat pictures. Again, that's the building directly to the south here. This is the single-family home that's also part of the hotel property, which is right here. Okay, thank you. A single structure right here. And then we have the single-family home on the southern boundary edge here to Building B4. And you can see some of the elevation change. They must have brought in some filler dirt before they built the house to bring it up to some type of flood standard.
So Building Four would be 10 feet from the property line?
There is a 10-foot buffer, which is a spatial buffer. I'm not sure how close they're going to actually get to that property line.
And how far is the existing single-family home from the property line? It looked like it was less than 10 feet.
I would have to get, I could not tell you without a survey in that district. Most of the lots in downtown are what we would call legal, non-conforming lots. They were platted before we had zoning subdivision regulations, so most of them are 50 feet wide. And if houses were to come in for a building permit today, they would be allowed to have a five-foot side setback.
Wow.
But without a survey, I couldn't tell you where that property is. Okay. Uh-oh, sorry about that. And then on our western boundary, again, we have the gas station over here, we have the Seattle Upholstery over here, and again, that's west because we got Building Two to the west. And then, again, you have the same building that had some grant dollars utilized in their facade program. We also had environmental review this request, as it was explained in the staff report. Most of the site was already cleared previously, so there was not a lot of any type of environmental value in the site. We also had our environmental staff look at ways to go ahead and look at any types of buffering, if we were going to require buffering, how do I use, get the right plantings for my conditions to achieve compatibility? So they helped me with conditions on shading pedestrian ways, appropriate buffering between the multifamily and the single-family. And then we also have a condition in the recommended conditions for a Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessment for this property over here. Previously, there was a cleanup or some type of violations with the petroleum. So we just want to make sure that there's no plumes in that area before the applicant decides to commence construction. So we're requesting a Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessment. Public Works, Engineering and Transportation were also review entities on this petition. What you'll see in the report is just a brief summary on the South Florida Water Management Conceptual Permit that the city secured about two or three years ago. And that was an incentive to go ahead and provide stormwater quality and quantity as a incentive for redevelopment in downtown. So if the applicant is going to take advantage of that incentive, they would coordinate with Public Works and our office at time of development order to provide us the necessary calculations. If they elect not to use that system, any type of drainage system that they would install, we are recommending that it be a closed drainage system, because in your downtown, you don't want to see open swales or dry detention ponds. You really want to see closed drainage systems. As we explained earlier, we spent so much money downtown, we want properties to be flood-proofed when they go ahead and submit for building permits. So we actually have that human-scale interaction at the street level. There was a traffic impact statement that was submitted initially with the application. I will note, when they first submitted, the request was for 92 units and 25,600 square feet of commercial uses. So the TIS was originally evaluated on those items, and there was found to be no deficiencies. But the applicant does have their traffic analyst still here, so he's here to speak on if you have any questions. If, based on their current development program, if that changes anything, we as staff don't think it does, and that the level of service for the roadway systems are intact. Public Works was also a party on the application to review for access and interconnectivity. As far as we knew, they had no objections to the location of the Terry Street access. However, you will see a condition in the zoning document that we are not giving that access by right as part of this approval. They will have to coordinate with Public Works. So Public Works can actually evaluate whether or not that is a safe turning movement based on the location and its proximity to the roundabout. Some other items that the board can consider is maybe conditioning of right turn in and right turnout. If that access is very important to the applicant to maintain, we really were trying to establish an internal block pattern, or alley system for deliveries, like Mr. Benkowski had shown everyone. Usually those types of facilities, your service areas, you really want internal to the block. Pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. Sean Gibbons with our office did review this request in terms of evaluation with the bicycle pedestrian master plan. The Terry Street improvements that were coordinated with Alta are all on the northern side of Terry Street. So for purposes of this review, we are recommending areas where the applicant didn't show on their master concept plan, sidewalk connections, to go ahead and continue those connections. So for example, on the east side of Center Avenue, we are asking them to create what's called an off-site pedestrian connection from their property to Terry Street, just to continue that network pattern. And then we're also recommending that they go ahead and coordinate with Public Works on the provision of sharrows. And if you're not sure what a sharo is, I've provided an example here down below. It's so if you have a constrained right-of-way, you can go ahead and still sign the pavement accordingly, so bicyclists and automobiles may share the same roadway.
Oh, excuse me. Before you get off of Public Works, question about utility lines. Are they going to be overhead, underground? Has that been addressed or discussed at all?
We have not discussed that with the applicant. There are some provisions in the downtown code of wires and utility lines when it's on your property into the right-of-way, but in terms of within the right-of-way, we've not had those discussions.
Counsel.
If I may, the downtown improvement project did contemplate undergrounding utilities and created a conduit, so there's a connection point where they would have to provide the easement to FPNL or the other utilities, and then they could go through the conduit.
I heard, I knew we had that on the downtown redevelopment, the Old Forty-One corridor, but they haven't done anything about that yet, so I was just...
Oh, we've spent quite a bit and have done a lot.
No, the electric utility lines?
Sorry?
Not the FPL lines.
The FPNL lines can't come down yet, but the conduit has been installed for it. There's some issues related to some other communication carriers that FPNL cannot remove it until those communication carriers get off their lines.
Is our position that all new midtown development require underground utilities going forward?
I'm going to leave that to John, but I believe the answer is for the down...
He's shaking, yes.
Okay. That for the downtown urban core.
But you're also requesting this, may I clarify, Mr. Brunswick, are you also wanting that same standard applied to the property on Center Avenue?
Yes, I would say, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Going forward, sure.
May I add something, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
On the west side of Building Number Four, there's an exiting onto Center Street, the, from the underground garage, right? And there's a little arrow there with the number two on it, shows the conflict of pedestrians. At that point, and I'm not sure exactly, but I believe there's a huge concrete power pole that has a ton of lines on it, on the east side of that street. That would have to be relocated. It doesn't show on any of the information provided, but I happened to be driving by it the other day and noticed it.
That should be part of the underground utilities.
Well, but my point of mentioning this is, it's going to be a great expense to relocate that pole to match this plan. Which I assume would be the developer's responsibility.
I think there's a pole here, there might be one there, two. If the board just wants to let us know if you're wanting to contemplate adding a condition relative to utilities, just may want to...
That would be my suggestion, that that problem be resolved by the developer, if it is a problem.
Next, with the consistency with the comprehensive plan, we touched on all these policies within your staff report. I'm going to apologize on the screen, this 1.122 is a carryover from a previous presentation, so please disregard that, and I sincerely apologize. But in terms of the policy language, with height, the applicant is correct, they're actually, staff is recommending conditions in their development program, is actually requesting a height that is below the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code standards. So staff is in agreement with that. In terms of the density and intensity, they are exercising the request to do 20 units per an acre, but their floor area ratio was actually at a 0.17 floor area ratio. For the compatibility and transitioning techniques, staff, again, had addressed that through our conditions contained in the staff report. And again, going into minimization of the compatibility, how we're recommending that we resolve those issues, that's also outlined in the staff report conditions. The availability of public services, Benita Springs Utilities and the School District were on these reviews, as well as Benita Springs Fire, and they had no objections or service concerns relative to the request. The bicycle pedestrian provisions, they are complying with the bike pedal master plan, and they have no objections to staff's recommended conditions on making connections with off-site facilities, to our facilities on Terry Street, and also the sharo concept. Coastal High Hazard, as I explained in the staff report, there's a teeny little sliver of Maria's property that is in the coastal high hazard, and that's just because of the relationship of where there's a drainage conveyance in the back of the property. So that's why that's showing up the way it is, is because of the drainage conveyance. But as proposed, that's going to be the parking area for Building One with the mixed-use component. But in relationship to the downtown redevelopment, their densities are consistent with what that area is envisioning at full build-out. Goal Seven and Fifteen relates to environmental, and as we explained in the staff report, there is, there has already been cleared and previously disturbed, there's no wetland species or listed species of concern. So it's consistent with the comprehensive plan for those elements. And based on the findings, as we stated in the beginning, through our analysis, we feel that we have provided recommendations that would go ahead and allow us to state how the applicant is consistent with all these 10 items listed on the screen. And with that, I'm here for questions, cross-examination.
I would like to hear from the city architect on the question of compatibility as it relates to Buildings Four and Five. Would that be all right?
Absolutely.
Good morning, Sam Vincent, City Architect. Buildings Four and Five would be these two here, the residential buildings, is what you're talking about.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
I've looked at these quite hard, and I think in reality, the size of the building, the massing, the mast avoid relationships, would meet the criteria of being compatible. The only thing more the architect could do is to reduce the mass, the visual mass of the side of the building. Not merely having a two-dimensional facade, but one that gives three-dimensionality to that whole side. And that's something I think you could address from a zoning standpoint, that the architect agrees with studies to look at how that plane moves in and out. And there are a number of ways accomplishing that, and that's, that could be part of this project. So that's the thing I would look at, is to making them more compatible. As I looked out of my window in the house from the yard, what is happening there? I can't remember if the back of these buildings, I say the back, the east side, has balconies, you know, on that, those sides are not, where you come out of the unit, onto the balcony. And one of the things that I look at, and I get concerned about in just designing the buildings, is the activity that happens on these balconies is important to the people that live next door. that live next door. Noise, other kinds of activities that happen out of these balconies, that's all part of compatibility. And I guess you could look at that and say, well, it's not compatible because we have people on 15 balconies looking at residential areas here. And how would you resolve that problem? That problem cannot be resolved. I mean, it's just people living, and you have to look at that as well. You have people that live in single-family homes, but you have people that find a home in a multi-story building. You know, they're equal in what they want in a home and what they can do in their home. So I don't think you can restrict, because of massing and so forth, restrict that kind of use. There has to be some respect for building these kinds of buildings and having built people in them. When I go home in the afternoon, I like to go outside on my courtyard in Lunai, enjoy that. If you were to buy one of these units, why would you want to restrict those people from that kind of activity? This is their home, and you have to look at it like their home. And from a realtor's standpoint, you know, he has to sell this as a home. It's not just a condominium unit, it's not an apartment. So as an architect, I look at all of those things and how it might impact my design and how I place this building on the site. In one respect, as you were talking about, this small house on the corner of Central, and how the architect looked at that in his architectural programming, decided not to put a building there, but instead gave open space. And if you looked at this project as a whole, there is a lot of open space. Open space in the center of the project, which brings continuity to all of the buildings that are around it. So you don't begin to appreciate the buildings, if you're on ground level, as much as you might appreciate the environment down at that level. So for those two units there, being residential is a very smart thing to do. And how you treat the architecture starts getting more and more difficult. Part of that has to be based on how people use these units. To say that they have to have a balcony might resolve a massing problem or avoid the mass ratio, but at the same time, what do they get to do with that? If I have a balcony that's three feet deep, I can't do much with it. I need to have something that's seven feet to eight feet deep to be usable. And when you do that, you promote more activity on that balcony. So this is a very, very difficult problem here. That's about, the only way I can explain it is that if we want some visual excitement on the sides of those buildings, that's within your purview to say, we need to have more of a breakdown of this massing and not just have, you know, a whole wall 50 feet, 40 feet, you know, 100 feet facing these houses. Because the houses are broken down to smaller masses. And so that would be how you would, you know, make it compatible.
Larry, could I ask a question?
Certainly.
I think you started out saying you didn't know whether there were balconies on that side. Are there or aren't there?
You know, I don't recall, I don't recall. Might I ask the architect if he could explain the realization there?
So the intent for buildings four and five, if you look at the front of those buildings, they're essentially mirror images of the back, so there would be balconies on the second and third floors, and the fourth floor, I believe, it's not up there, but the fourth floor does have a setback balcony that's quite a bit into the building, so there's a void there. The second and third floor balconies come out past the building facade.
And how far do they come out?
Approximately, I would say about three feet. If you look at the rendering, that's about what we've got there.
So they sound like they're more balconies for attractiveness than use. Three feet, you're not going to do too much on the balcony.
Right. The upper-level stories would have a larger balcony.
Have it what?
The higher levels, the fourth floor, would have a larger balcony, a more usable balcony.
Would that be on both sides of the building, on the south side of building four and the east side of building five?
That's the intent, yes.
Just a question, are these pass-through units? I mean, do they, are there, how many units per floor are there? Four? There's eight units total, right?
Those two buildings have six units per floor, three on each side of the building.
Three on each side, so they're not pass-through. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is the presentation by the staff completed now?
No, I have one more witness, Mr. Chairman, it'll be very brief.
Please.
Called John Dolmer, even though his name was not listed on the first slide.
He's just compensate for that, gets to talk.
Mr. Dolmer?
Yes, sir.
If you could state your name for the record?
John Dolmer.
In your position?
The community development director.
We've seen a lot of pretty pictures and a lot of elevations and examples of what may or may not come. Through this process, have you provided any conditions to ensure that what we're being shown is what we'll actually get?
We have, we have somewhat tied this architectural standard to the approval, but I think that if this board wishes to condition that the renderings that you're seeing here today be the standard to which this project is developed, you could adopt them as, as part of the, either the master concept plan set or as part of the official ordinance, so that building permits need to be generally consistent with what you're looking at in this presentation.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question? We also heard from Mr. Vincent today on the courtyards. Do we have a timing for those courtyards? Because if they are, for example, the last thing built, would that create a problem for the public?
The...
Like the, to keep the scale and massing of the building, having the courtyard area?
The, for the central portion of the project?
Uh-huh.
No, we have not talked about that timing specifically.
Have you, okay. Is that something that might be a condition at the zoning board, so things, so that any scale or massing, the public would be able to take opportunity at that point?
That, that could be an opportunity.
Mr. Dolmer, I'm handing you a copy of the staff report, and there's a condition, I think it's number six, that refers to elevations, and has the elevations attached as an exhibit?
The project shall be designed in accordance with Chapter Four LDC, Article Five, Division 11, and generally consistent with the elevations in Attachment C, except as modified herein. This development must comply with all architectural requirements of the LDC at the time of local development order approval, except as may be granted by deviation approval as part of this plan development.
By attaching the elevations, is it your intent to recommend to the zoning board that that provide another hook to ensure that the project is designed in accordance with what we've been shown today?
Yes, sir, and that was why I was saying they may want to attach these renderings as part of that approval specifically.
Thank you, sir. No other witnesses, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anything further from the applicant at this time?
I will just add to that response, that if you go to the Attachment C referenced by Mr. Theriak and Mr. Dolmer, all the elevations, all the illustrative renderings have been included in Attachment C, so by way of that condition, we have committed to that design quality and appearance. I think it's appropriate to hear from the public at this point, but we'd like to run through any rebuttal items following a public comment if possible.
So...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Can I make a request, that in continuity with the city architect's explanation of the balconies and the height, and how they might affect the neighbors, that you would accept in a condition that on building five, any on the east side, any balconies on the east side be limited to three feet? And on building four, any balconies on the south line be limited to three feet? If you could make, if you would accept that as a condition?
I'm going to confer with the architect and client. I would, the only item that I would like to clarify on that is, for building four, the south side, if we could have the ability to have the fourth floor balconies deeper, as long as they are recessed into the building further, so it will be set back further from the single-family unit to the south by way of recessing the building to accommodate the balcony. But I believe we can likely agree to that, we just would need to confer.
Mr. Chairman, may I follow up?
Please.
Two brief questions for Ms. Crespo.
Ms. Crespo, just to be clear, you provide a handout with your proposed revisions to the conditions, except for the items that you have proposed to be changed. Is the applicant agreeing to all of the other conditions in the staff report?
Yes.
And then lastly, the public area that's depicted in the center of the project, is it accurate that that area will remain ungated and accessible to the public throughout the project's life?
Yes.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Yeah, one second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe I got an answer to my question.
I think we made, I think I brought it up, that the hours of operation not before seven o'clock and has to stop at 10 o'clock.
We'll, we'll come to that.
Okay.
Going back to Mr. Worcester's question, do you need some time to...
No, I can respond to that now.
Okay.
So, looking at the, do we have an elevation rendering? Looking generally at that rendering in the upper right-hand corner, I would only ask that we maybe consider those to be four feet, if we have three-foot doors swinging out onto those balconies. Want to make sure that we're clear, and we don't conflict ourselves later on. But that would generally be the intent, is what you see there, is what you want to limit it to. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's not the right building. I'm talking about four and five, which don't have that breezeway through.
Understood, but in terms of the balconies on the, on the second and third floors, that's, four foot would be compatible, yeah.
I agree to that.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is John Pino. I'm the president of the Benita Springs Downtown Alliance. I'm a local business owner and a local resident. One of the things I would like to point out is this area that was pointed out a little earlier is transition. It's in transition. Right now, the average income in that area is under the state average income, so we're looking at poverty level just about. We need to do something here. We need to make some moves. I do history walks downtown, and one of the most asked questions is, when is development going to happen? We see all this stuff, but we don't see anything happening. After two years of road closures and then Irma, downtown needs a break. This community needs to see progress, and it is up to you to show them this. Tens of millions of dollars were spent to buy property along this strip with the sole purpose of development. Millions were spent on the road in anticipation of development. I cannot stress how important to the future and prosperity of downtown this project is. You have the unenviable position of being the good guys or the bad guys in this situation. Please be the good guys. This developer has worked with the city on this project for going on three years. They have reached out to the community and held open forums for the public input. I beg and implore you, do not delay this project any longer. Ultimately, this is a council decision, please move it forward for them to make. Thank you.
Further public comment?
Just for the, clearing up a few things, I don't build New York City. I've had the opportunity to do that all my life, and I've gotten away from it. I've done Bristol, Rhode Island, I've done O'Line, Connecticut, you know, that's the kind of things I like to do, and Newport, Rhode Island, was where I did my most stuff. In fact, I'd just like to say, my type of development, if you notice, I don't have a wall in the whole development. I try and always make it inclusive to the entire city. My, my reasoning on this is because I don't want the people who coming in here to feel like outsiders, and I don't want to make the people in Benita feel like they're being left behind. Because of this, instead of the development owning amenities, it'll own no amenities. And this is how I'm going to conquer that. What I intend to do is I'm going to have a club called the City Club, and the City Club will pay for the membership of all the people in the development to be part of the City Club. It'll have a swimming pool, it'll have rec rooms, it'll have weight rooms, that sort of thing, you know, exercise rooms. I don't do too much of that. But also, anybody else who lives in the community could pay the same price they're paying per unit, and they can join the Benita City Club. I'm trying to flex the whole community into this, and I think that's the way you got, that was the whole idea, how I came up with the kayak thing with John. The more things that are relevant to this community and make this community a part of it, the more, the better it is for this project. And you were talking about amenities. Actually, the idea for that pass-through from Old Forty-One to the water fountain came from the city architect. Pretty guy, that was a great idea for marketing for us, because we told people who were going in those buildings or restaurants, you can have your people sit outside and not worry about the rain, you know? But because we're doing that, we have to build that city center right away, or else it's worthless to buy people, because you know how you look through, you see the fountain? What are you going to see? Nothing? A hole in the ground? You gotta do that fountain and all with the first building, and we're aware of that. So that city center has got to go with the first building, and I promise it to my tenants, that building's 100% rented already on first floor. There's coffee shops, pizzerias, restaurants, you know, that kind of thing. This project, the point, most important point for me, is that it's inclusive of everybody, not exclusive of anybody, and that this project is an invading Benita. This project is becoming a part of Benita, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you please come back for a second?
Sure.
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Anthony Mansolillo, one of the developers.
Thank you, sir.
Can we also spell the last name for the court reporter?
I don't do choice too good, so push slow. Just for another point, our development company...
While you're at...
Now that she got me back, our development company is the only certified disabled veteran-owned development company in southwest Florida. In fact, we're the only ones north south of Tampa and all the ways over to the east coast. There's one other just north of Tampa.
Any further public comment?
Yes, my name is Victoria Conti. I live in the neighborhood, I'm off of West Terry. My main source of access for my residential home is Old Forty-One, one-lane highway going each direction, and I guess my major concern is the traffic congestion that this large project will have, the impact on the residents in the neighborhood. I just think it's, it's a lovely project, but with 82 residences, I think it's too large for that location. That's my only comment, and I believe I speak for most of the residents in that immediate area. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Further public comment?
And I'd like to thank you all for doing such a wonderful job, taking your own personal expertise and putting it to this project. I love the question about the alley, and I, I immediately thought right turn in, right turn out would make it safe, because I too use the gas station, I live in nothing like it, right behind Riverside Park. And we walk everywhere, not because of any other reason, except it's so beautiful. We go to Benson's. A lot of people are like, oh, Benson's, but we go to Benson's, they have groceries, they have milk. We go and get a gallon of milk instead of getting in the car, going to the intersection of Benita Beach Road and New Forty-One, going to Publix. Forget it, it's, everything is right there, and if there were more businesses... to Publix, forget it, it's, everything is right there, and if there were more businesses, you would have more people on foot going to these places, and what a dream it would be to own one of these residences. So I want you to know, and I live in a, in the Grove, and many of my, our residents feel the same way, they're not here, of course, and of course I can't speak for them, but they're, you know, we're always walking to Shangri-La, over to the Survey Cafe, so we'll see you there, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, y'all, for the record, Kathy McGrath, longtime resident, just a little bit of background, my late husband and I bought our first property on Illinois Street, Oak Creek, in 1967, and, yes, and we built Nelson Plaza in 1979, so downtown Benita has always been a warm spot in my heart for me, and I'm here to support 100% this project. Now, I've seen presentations over the last year or so, but nothing in depth like this. And yes, as Barbara said, I want to commend all of you for doing your homework, and if you had any reservations or concerns, I think they were answered by both the applicant and staff, who's all wonderful. The downtown merchants, as was mentioned, they put up with a lot of, I shouldn't say, they put up with a loss of business while the revitalization was going on, but they always knew that there were planned things coming, and they could see the light at the end of the tunnel, and they knew it was coming. So I'm asking you to please support this, let's get this moving, we all want it, and again, thank you for what you have done, because I learned, even though I have seen a lot of this, I learned a lot today, so thank you very much.
Further public comment? There being none. I have a question for the, for the applicant. What we've heard today is, from everyone, is that there is a serious need to get the Old Forty One project underway, and this represents an opportunity to do so immediately. In that regard, would you have any objection to us adding a condition that the applicant must substantially complete the project within two and a half years after the development order? What I'm trying to do here, councils, both of you, is to, from my point of view at least, I'm speaking only for myself here, is to promote development, I'm not terribly enthusiastic about promoting speculation. Please.
Yes and no. Here's the thing, although we purchased all our land for cash, so we'll have no problem getting financing, we have strong equity of over a million dollars in the ground of our own cash, but we have to start our financing all over again, because this took three years from when we first started, and when we thought we had a go-forward, we had a oops, and now we have to start our financing all over again, because our time ran out, and that's our problem, but we can do that. We have four banks interested in us. The second thing is, one of the biggest concerns with everybody in that area was we didn't do all the buildings at once, and I hate to have stood up in front of 125 residences at the last thing and say that we're going to do them one building at a time, and then have to do them all at once, because you want them done in two and a half years. I can't do both. I figure it's going to be closer to three and a half years to do all the buildings, because they don't want to be, like, you know those three houses down there? They were the ones who really set us to be, are we going to have cranes in our yard for three? No. I said we're going to have, our cranes and our machines are on our property, they're not going to be on Center Street, and the buildings will be one at a time. If I had to do them all at once, that might be a different story. But I want to keep my word to all those people that I would do the buildings one at a time, and they wouldn't have a mass, they've, they've had enough with the redevelopment of Forty One, and I understand that. So with that, I'd say, three and a half years would be more logical.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that comment. I would ask, however, which building do you intend to start with? And the reason I say that, you know, this appears to be a well-thought-out project, in my opinion, in my opinion. It's not perfect, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have to, I think you have to be by a microphone somewhere, does someone have a portable microphone?
He's pointing to building number...
Okay.
I don't...
Two.
Two.
Building two.
Building two would be first, can you hear me on this?
Yes, I can.
Okay, building two would be first, Maria's would be second, across the street.
That'd be building one.
Now, that's another thing I haven't gotten into here, we've got this parcel here under control, we didn't want to mucky up the system, because we were already done with this, but if I could get this through fast enough, I'd like building three to be here, so that I could make a fast movement onto Old Forty One. Then I want to go back here, these buildings I'm doing last, and I'll tell you why, we've had some people come to us who live in Benita Bay, who live in some very expensive neighborhoods around here, and they'd like to be Center City, they want to be able to walk to everything, they want to work with our architects and design their own units, and we've agreed to that. So I wanted to do those two buildings last, and that's why the order is like it is.
So building two, building three, then building four and five.
Right.
And building one?
But there, there may be another building, if it's approved, right here, and that would be my third building. It's more logical to complete the street first.
But that's not within the, this request today?
No, no.
No.
But I have, I have the, the development contract filed with Jay.
But for purposes of this request, building two, three, then one, then four and five?
Right, but this isn't, this isn't the district that we requested.
Fourth coming.
Fourth coming. Did I answer good enough?
To continue with my question, I'm glad to hear that you said that building number two will be first, because if, if our board does approve it, you know, I, as I started to say, nothing's perfect, but I think it's off to a good start. It is the beginning of the downtown redevelopment that we've all dreamed of, and should that be the first building, I believe it would certainly encourage others to follow suit. There's a lot, a lot of people are talking, they want to do something, but they haven't yet.
That's why I said I would stay on Old Forty One as long as I could, and then again, that would make a difference of when I finish this, because I've acquired other properties, and I want to do the ones I've acquired on the street first, before I tackle the back end. You, you would want me to go the opposite way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question for you while you're up here.
Yes, sir.
All of these buildings and the promenade area, will they all be under a common ownership?
Here's the way it's done, are you familiar with Pelican Bay?
No.
Okay. What we did is, and, and this is more for getting the people the best mortgage rate in Fannie Mae and FHA and so on, and being able to get the heroes mortgages for the community, fire, police, and so on, we, we have to complete 50% of the project before Fannie Mae, FHA, et cetera, will allow them to be financed through them. And we don't want a bunch of investors, we don't want a bunch of rental investors. So this building here will be its own condominium association, there will be a master's homeowners' association, okay, and each one will be their separate association, or however Tallahassee approves it after that. But the idea is, when this building's done, I need nine sales to go FHA. When I go FHA with those nine, that gives me 18. I add this building, or this building to it, there's another 18, I've already 50% sold. So they're, they're, they're also approved for FHA and hero mortgages, VA, et cetera.
So they will all be under a master condominium association?
A master homeowners association, I believe the state, that's how they refer to it.
For, for maintenance and upkeep?
Yes.
How does the promenade fit into that equation? Who made, you're calling that a public amenity, which means that it's really, and that it's contiguous with the rest of the Forty One?
It's, it's maintained by the homeowners association.
If I may?
Yeah.
We have a plating requirement, even if it's a condominium, that we have a boundary plat of all the property within its subdivision, in this case, all the property that would be added to that, and, that's why I look at Mr. Sweet here, and it would be, were dedications as to who was responsible for each element would be outlined.
I guess where, where I'm going is that, you know, what, what you've created there is, you know, very attractive outdoor promenade civic space with seating.
We want a place where people could sit on the edges of the, the, this fountain's a big fountain, you know, and, you know, there'll be a pool around the fountain, and people can sit on the stone wall around the pool, it's going to be nice, it's a city thing.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be very nice, but how, how do you agree with the city as to how it gets maintained, used?
We have to maintain it, the association has to maintain it.
Right.
That's what the homeowners association's for, grounds. Each building has its own condo association for the buildings.
Right.
But the, and they, they may merge all of them after, that's fine, but the grounds are maintained by the homeowners association. You know, I like things to be easy, and when I did a development in Bristol, you can look it up, right, I, I made my presentation, like I'm making here, and I said it's going to be kind of a cove where you go down with baggy wrinkled pants, even though it's got all these amenities. We ended up naming the place Baggy Wrinkle Cove, that's, that's the registered name now for it, but it just, I want it to be nice, but I don't want it to be too sophisticated, it's not easy. I want it to be friendly.
Ms. Crespo.
Yes, to, to answer Mr. Donnelly's question, an example of how the maintenance works with public spaces, I live in Gateway in Fort Myers, where there's, there's a dog park in Gateway that's open to the public, so the public can, can go there, walk their dog, and it's maintained, though, by the, the master association, the CDD of the overall community, so you can't have a situation where public space is maintained by a private homeowners association.
Okay, all right. Jay, you, you had something to contribute to that, that question, I guess, the, the heart of my question is, how does this public space relate to the rest of the downtown development, and what kind of coordination, use agreements are?
Actually, we do, we do that through the plating process in a lot of developments, and, and in its simplest form, there will be, there's a dedication on the face of the plat of what uses are allowed. Typically, this would be dedicated to the separate tract or an easement, and these would have very specific, what's allowed to be done and what can't be done in there. And then part of our plating process, we also review the, the property association documents. And so we make sure that the city attorney's office, when they review them, go through and make sure that the dedications are there, that there's a mechanism for maintenance, and all those things are taken care of as part of the POA. So in order to get their plan approved, they have to do their POA documents, this is really sort of standard, whether it's done by easement or tract, it can be done either way, but to, to ensure that the public has it access, that's, that's a fairly easy task to accomplish.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? It seems to me, to try and sum this up for my colleagues here, that we have three sets of issues here. We have the issue that there's a divergence of opinion with regard to uses in building three, and there's a divergence of opinion with regard to massing height and scale in buildings four and five. Those are two separate issues. The third set of things to consider is, what is the wish of the board? And that's a, a separate thing, and along the way here, there've been several suggestions. I would suggest that we start by considering, I mean, is this, can we, for our own deliberations, rather than try to mask it into a monster motion at this moment, discuss building three, then go to four and five, and then discuss what each of us wants in the motion. The vice chairman had suggestions, there were suggestions all along the way here.
Before, before you, I'm with you on that, but before you get into that, something that I haven't heard that was brought up, has to do with traffic at the intersection of Center and Terry, did I miss it, or was there something mentioned? Mike, pardon?
I thought we talked about going out to the right and coming in, so that it wouldn't go across traffic.
Okay, because that, my concern, when I looked at this package, very complete package, my thought was to, to have a right turn only off of Terry on to Center, and possibly even considering it being one-way south. I don't know if that's feasible, but right turn in, right turn out would work equally as well. But I think that that's, to avoid the congestion, and certainly to avoid people crossing over Terry Street to head westbound, for lack of a better way to say it, it's an accident, in my opinion, looking for a place to happen, that's a congested area.
So that would come under the category of our wishes?
Well, that would be, yeah, but not with regards to the buildings that we're talking, as we're talking, the overall plan.
My third point was, we've discussed the overall plan.
Okay.
And whatever your wishes are.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something, Ms. Genson?
It was relative to Mr. Bronswick's comments.
Sure.
But we can talk about that when we go through the rest.
So would it be okay if we talk about building three first with all of you? So, building three, the, the issues presented are, what should be the uses of the building? Today, we've received an amended use of, right?
Yes, sir.
And the question is, what's your feeling with regard to the staff position, and what's your feeling with regard to the, and I'll try to put this in some kind of motion as we, later on.
Chairman Kurlander?
Please.
I don't want to slow this process down, we, we didn't have our opportunity for rebuttal or closing comments.
I'm sorry.
But if we can participate in this conversation, or if you'd like me to summarize kind of where...
No, please, please summarize.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
I appreciate it. I will be brief, because we're cutting into lunch hour. In terms of item one, the uses, we've submitted changes here today, we believe we're in agreement with staff, that if we modify that outdoor seating is restricted from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., we believe we're in full agreement with staff, that they are comfortable with the modifications regarding restaurant and retail specialty foods. And so that through this great discussion we've had today, we've really eliminated concern regarding the uses, so we would respectfully request the limitation on outdoor dining to be modified accordingly, and then move forward with the, with the applicant's proposal. In terms of access, certainly the alleyway connecting to Terry Street, having that further conditioned to be right-in, right-out only is appropriate, we're, we're already subject to further review by Public Works, so by no means is that access granted by way of this zoning approval, but to further limit right-in, right-out would be appropriate.
Pardon me, are we talking, when you say alley, I'm, I was referring to Center Street.
Correct, so...
Oh, I thought we talked about blocking that off completely.
Well, Board Member Worcester had brought that up as a concern, and I had stated that a, a meeting point could be restricting that movement to a right-in, right-out, but it's up to this board's pleasure to do whatever you think would address your safety concerns. And again, Mr. Banks is here from the applicant's team, and then, we don't have a traffic analyst here, but what I can say is, based on the traffic impact statement, there were no concerns from a level of service standpoint. And we do have that condition about Public Works evaluating the mid-block, but nothing on Center. And that alley is, is critical to fire access, we were asked to push the building to Center's... We were asked to push the building to Center's frontage, Center Avenue frontage, so that you wouldn't see the parking area. And so, in order to meet that desire, to have the, the building on the street frontage, we had to tough the parking in the rear, but that access is very important to, to fire circulation.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman.
But right-in, right-out would limit it.
Please.
I can see a channelized right turn in only, but no right turn out, because that would be very easy to violate. You don't have enough room to really channelize the traffic to not cheat and go across the three lanes of eastbound Terry. It's very narrow in there to start with. So limit it to a right turn in only, that would be adequate for your fire protection? That's gonna be where they're coming in? That would be my suggestion for that, for that to be a condition.
The other, I'll move on to, to the height item. We've noted that the elevations, the whole series and package of them are attached as Attachment C, so they would be binding. We are self-inflicting a more restrictive building height limitation on this project than what could be done by right without this PD zoning and prior to adoption of the comp plan. So we very much entered into this, this process restricting ourselves from a height standpoint. Ms. Genson did an excellent job of inventorying the surrounding properties and noting that the buildings to the north can develop at 55 feet, higher than what we're asking to do, and to the south, 35 feet at, measured from base flood elevation. We have met with that property owner to the south, he spoke in support of the project at the city council hearings. And so we have had good coordination with the community, and they recognize the transition, they're welcoming, welcoming the transition. And it is a chicken and egg, if we're, we're limited on height and we have to wait for further transition to happen, I mean, this building will be locked in for what will be decades, you know, 50-plus years. So we would respectfully request, based on the, the architectural elevations that are binding, the height measurement, that we get the 45 feet. And we are in agreement that we can limit those balconies to the four-foot on the south side of building four, and on the east side of building five, four-foot balconies to allow limited use of those areas, so there wouldn't be a lot of noise generated by them. We would ask that fourth floor balconies be allowed to be 10 feet in depth, but only because they're being recessed into the building, that same 10 feet. And so we feel like that kind of captures a lot of the comments heard here today, and would allow us to move forward in a way that's feasible in regards to the building height. And I'll just lastly note on underground utilities, that to the extent you craft a condition relating to that, we certainly would appreciate the flexibility that those types of details be worked out at the time of DO, certainly encouraging certain enhancements would be appropriate by this board. But if it's out of the control of the developer to underground or relocate, we would respectfully request the condition, allow for that flexibility for what is in his control to do at the time of construction. Thank you.
Any further?
Was, for clarification, was the outdoor seating, were we talking about all of the commercial buildings, or just building three?
Staff's concern emanated from building three, based on its location next to single family, but this board can set forth any recommendation, it feels appropriate.
Is there anything further from the applicant?
Jimms Banks just brought forth some potential language that we, we can work on. There's a lot of different ways we can approach this access onto Terry Street. And certainly, a condition requesting that we continue to work on this through DO would be appropriate, so we can look at different traffic controls to ensure right-in, right-out at the alley at DO stage. But there's a lot of moving parts to access, and we would need to coordinate with the appropriate entities before.
With, I'd say this respectfully, you wanted this hearing today.
Yes, sir.
And it's our obligation to comply with your wish. And so to, to put it off and say, well, we'll, we'll kick the can down the road, I think is a bit disingenuous at this point.
Well, let me just say that, that those are just construction-level, permit-level details typically.
These are fundamental questions that they're raising there.
Let me, let me ask, would, would you want to take a recess for, to discuss this? And can you put it together in a short order, or not?
No, this, this is something that you, you sit down and have pre-applications with different transportation entities at the time of development order. So certainly, we would like a, a recommendation date to move forward, and if, if it's your will to include traffic limitations, we'll move forward as such, but.
Anything further?
I don't agree with this, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've proven over the years that the traffic from Center to Terry Street is a quagmire, and it's gonna stay that way. Now unless we go along with what Mr. Brunswick had said, make the right-hand turn and just make that street southbound, that makes sense, we're putting safety above architect, whatever. Safety is paramount in a case like this. And, you know, it's gotta be, you want us to go along with this, you're gonna have to help us a little bit here today.
For the record, Jim Banks, I didn't mean to put Alexis in the box here, and have you considered that she was proposing something that was outside the norms. But there are certain measures that we can take to put in controls to maintain right-in, right-out. Now, I submit to you that you're making a decision without thoroughly investigating the situation, and you may be right. It may be that a right-in only should be the only access there, but what we were, what we're requesting is that you let us work with your staff, and Tom Ross, who's a registered professional engineer, State of Florida, and we can work with him on developing, if it is, if it is deemed acceptable to have a right-out access at that location, then we could come up with the traffic control devices to maintain that. Now, one way to do it would be, you got the arrow of the roundabout. The. There's one where you got the, the roundabout. Yeah, right there. I mean, one consideration would simply be extending the traffic separator further to the east, that entry traffic separator. So there are ways to prevent people from turning left out, which was one of your major concerns. Again, we haven't thoroughly analyzed how that affects the traffic flow to go to a one-way street versus a two-way and having that right out. It could cause additional traffic implications down the road. And again, I submit to you, we're not trying to kick the can down the road, we just want to make sure that what we do works for everybody. And again, Tom Ross will be reviewing this, and we will be working with him. And it may make sense to have it maintained as a two-lane ingress egress with a right-in, right-out, and it may not, we don't know. So again, that's.
Question the chairman brought up, which needed, oh no, Mr. Brunswick, 15 minutes, 10 minutes to discuss with staff? Do you want to do that?
Well, Tom, Tom Ross isn't even here, so I really would have to work with Tom Ross on it. He's in.
Thomas City's.
Yeah, I know who it is.
Oh, sorry, but, yeah, he's your traffic engineer.
I would point out one thing, should it be the wish of this board to place that as a condition?
Yes.
You do have another shot at the, at city council.
Yeah.
They can overrule us.
I submit to that, yes.
They can overrule us.
Yeah, right, of course, okay.
So. So let's try and.
Can I make a comment about that? I would be very uncomfortable putting a condition on something like this when I don't have the information as to whether this is what makes sense or not. I think that the comment that we encourage them to look at this and work with the staff makes sense. But we don't, we don't have, and we know this is a dangerous corner, I mean, you know, I don't know that, but that's been stated, and I believe you. But we don't have the expert testimony here as to what the best solution is. So I would be very uncomfortable having us put a condition into our approval that's based on our opinion, not on fact. And so for me, though I hear, and I'm certainly hopeful that the applicant will make sure that, that this is seriously addressed, we have other places along the way where traffic will be addressed. And I think for this sort of situation, you know, if we'd asked this to be dealt with or something and come forward, maybe that's a different thing. But I certainly would be uncomfortable, and I think as a whole, that the presentation here has been excellent today. I think that the thing that I've had the most trouble with, I think, Mr. Therac, you helped me with, is that there is that balance between the rights of private property, single-family owners, and the, and having a larger edifice go next to them. But when you are trying to start, and this is very clearly a decision that the council has already made, a redevelopment effort in downtown, you need to be, as you said, Larry, somebody's gotta be the first one. And I think that for that, then we need to make our, our sort of judgment on this on that other end of your, of your continuum as to how to think about things, so. But as far as this issue that we were dealing with, I just, I don't think we know whether it's better to go just to the right-in and right-out, or we'll have it at a one-lane street, we just don't know the answer to that. And I would think that the best condition would be put in, that that should be investigated carefully.
It's actually in there.
Well, then, then to me, then that covers what I.
That's in condition 13. If you look at condition 13 in the document, that's the transportation conditions, and I believe that was set up by Mr. Ross, who is the city's transportation expert, and Jackie can elaborate.
And there's also condition 12C, which dealt with the mid-block access. And what we can also do is, in between this hearing and city council, is, has some follow-up discussions with Tom Ross, Jim Banks, but also Public Works, because Terry, Terry Street is their roadway. So I definitely would want their input into any type of condition.
Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Please.
Make, make sure that we're very clear, we're really talking about two intersections. Roger and Robert had been talking about Center Street and South, making that a one-way south, right-in, right-out only on Center Street.
Correct.
Excuse me, if it'd be one-way, there would be no out, if it'd be one-way southbound. Totally different than the alley.
The alley, which you talked about for the.
Condition, which is behind building three. And, and that's the one that I brought up. So if the city wants to require a change of Center Street to southbound only, if that's already presents conflicts with the existing traffic, it would certainly be exactly, traffic coming out northbound off of Center Street to turn left, if that's a problem now, it's gonna be greatly, bigger problem with this development. So that's, that's totally a separate issue. So as we address this, we either want, through my opinion, we talk about it as two separate conditions.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Is there anything further? So could you, could staff define for us, what are the fundamental differences in the uses that you, at this stage of the proceeding, that you disagree with? I think we've all agreed that we're gonna add a provision that the outdoor seating can only be between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, period.
So based on Board Member and Serpys' recommendation of doing 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, if we want to apply that also to the restaurant uses and the specialty foods, staff could be amenable to allowing those uses and not have disagreement that they're only allowed by special exception.
So these are not outdoor uses, though, that you're talking about now?
The restaurant, right, so a restaurant could be, so, let me rephrase. So in the restaurant uses right now, I had no objections to the uses, it was just the period of dinner and after-hours. So that's the issue that I had with the restaurant use. Otherwise, for a breakfast or lunch, cafe use, maybe some tapas in the afternoon, staff had no concerns, it was that evening hour period where I had some reservations. The retail specialty foods, where that came into play, was, you know, and when the store closes, what types of noises are we gonna hear when people are taking out trash to the dumpster or to the recycling? It was just those types of issues. So if we have a, a time period for which the, the use must cease and close for the night, then staff would be amenable to allowing those uses.
Mr. Chairman, my concern was, excuse me, if the outside seating serves alcohol with dinner, okay, you can't say at 10 o'clock at night, last call, because by the time everybody leaves, it's like 11 o'clock, which isn't fair to the people that live in the area. You know, so you gotta give like last, I mean, it's up, whoever's running the restaurant, it's up to them to make sure that by 10 o'clock, there's no alcohol and people are gone.
That's code.
And if you, if you want to do that with the restaurant, that's fine also.
I can write the condition so that restaurants' outdoor seating and retail specialty foods is permitted from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, no, no service, or no one may be outside after that, or to that effect. Are you, you're understanding?
Yes.
And we've had that with Malloy's and some other ones.
That's good.
Others follow the same condition.
Okay.
So other than that.
What other uses are we in disagreement on?
Those were the only ones. Otherwise, the applicant is not objecting to us requiring that the uses that are left be only permitted through a special exception process. So, which means coming back to a public hearing.
So is the applicant now in accord with our recommendation?
Uh, yes, we are.
Okay, so that problem solved. Okay. The larger issue, it seems to me, is with regard to buildings four and five. Again, we'll get to what your wishes are in, in a minute. We have a question, and as been pointed out, David Theriak has made it clear that the issue of compatibility is a subjective thing, but it goes along a spectrum of things. And we're at the low end of the spectrum with regard to compatibility from a legal point of view. What is your wish? How should we proceed on this with regard to height, massing, and so on?
I think if, if you look at the site plan, and we talked about the little nonhistoric building, they've, they've made a great effort here to cushion that and to buffer that with a parking area that is low-profile, and added a 10-foot buffer around it. If you look at the footprint involved in B4 and B5, it would appear that there's some flexibility there. You look at the back of B5, there's, there's a wide space with a, with a pedestrian walkway that goes through it. B4 could be, could be moved forward toward the, the parking area in order to cushion that one remaining little single-family house that's there. Seems to me that there's, there's flexibility within this overall plan to make those minor adjustments to achieve some of the things that we're concerned about. The, so that the idea of three stories over, versus two stories over the parking, are they one-bedroom units, are they two-bedroom units, are they studio units? You mentioned that they might be even more grand than that, if you get some of your Benita Bay people custom designing these things. So I, I think that we don't, it's not our job to put a lot of architectural restrictions on what happens here. We don't have a clear elevation drawing of these buildings. The only elevations that I've seen are the buildings on, on 41. So we don't know what that, these buildings are gonna look like on the outside. I think our instructions to the developer are, is that they be consistent with the overall. I think our instructions to the developer are, is that they be consistent with the overall architectural themes that he's been trying to develop here. I don't think we need to be too restrictive. I, I think keeping the three stories over parking, if it's done architecturally well, would not be a problem. Help the developer achieve the density that he needs to get this thing financed. Those are my thoughts. I think we don't want to be too restrictive.
Seems to me that Mr. Conley has aptly summed up the issue here. Three stories, three stories with, on the applicant's side, two stories from the staff.
Yeah.
And he comes down on the side of three stories. How do you all, any disagreement with that?
I go along with the three stories. I'm okay.
No disagreement. So on that, on that issue, we come down on the side of the applicant. So addressing Audrey Vance now, because you'll be drafting, because we're going to need a complex-
Oh, yeah. Now, I'm going to have to ask you each one of these.
Yeah, I'm going to have to have a complex motion here. Now, so that, are there any other issues that you want to address with regard to Buildings Four and Five? Everybody satisfied?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, they already acquiesced to the four-foot balconies.
That's correct.
Okay.
That, that, that's part of the, that will be part of the motion, is that, that, on, it's on the south side of-
Four.
On the south side of four.
East side of five.
And the east side of five.
Except for the fourth floor. Well, no, that's disregard.
No, no, that's right.
The fourth floor is 10-foot.
Fourth level can go 10-foot.
10-foot.
Right.
Four-foot on the-
Which is the third level of apartments.
Okay. So that solves that problem, and we're, we're all in agreement on that.
Right.
Now, tell me, if we can go in order, your, any other? You want to say something?
No, I think you've covered everything here. The only thing I would add is that in the parking level, we do have control over the amount of landscaping to conceal the garage from the residential, and I think that's important.
Yes, it is.
Right, so I think we have that covered in our landscaping requirements. That's the only issue I could see at the ground level with the adjacent, adjacent-
Below ground, we talked about the underground utilities.
Is that within our purview?
Nope. There's actual new session law that was a pass, I'm sorry, new session law passed this year by the legislature. Only the Public Service Commission can require underground transmission lines.
Another, another blow to home rule.
I mean, we can require that up to the transmission line, it needs to be undergrounded. But I don't know physically, legally, I think you can have your point of entry, it needs to be, if undergrounding is available, they have to go underground.
But there is, there is-
I think that's fine.
There is an issue as outlined in the materials we received with regard to the, whether or not the applicant was going to attach to the storm sewers that are already there or-
Yeah, I mean, you have to hook up if something is there. So I mean, I think that type of condition would be fine.
Yeah.
Is something to the effect of, and this is probably in an act, well, I see the connection there for stormwater, but-
I mean, the city has spent all this money on putting in this fabulous underground network.
Absolutely, right.
Does the applicant have any objection to hooking up to that network?
To the Benita Springs Utilities Sewer and-
Yeah, the sewer.
Or the storm-
Stormwater.
We're in agreement on the stormwater management conditions in the staff report.
Right.
So that would require you to have some additional cost to pay for those units of stormwater discharge.
I believe it provides some opportunities to connect into the city's-
Yes. But the opportunities include fee. I believe that's right. Jay? Stormwater discharge, if they use the, the very expensive facilities that the city put in, they would have to pay, pay for that allowed use.
They got to use the system, because what we did is we have a master permit for that entire area which they will be in. And so when they come in for that, they will actually ask South Water District for a modification of the system to allow theirs to be a part of our system. And all that will get worked out at engineering time. So it's, it's, it's a foregone conclusion what they have to do. How they handle certain things within their project, they have that flexibility, but they will be part of our system.
You're talking about the creation of a rebateable agreement so that whatever it costs for them to connect in, they reimburse the city, is that?
No, I think Jay explained it.
Okay.
Okay, starting down this end, does Vice Chairman have any additions or conditions you want to place on this project?
No, I think we basically covered all of it. I don't, my hat's off to them, I think they did a wonderful job, fantastic job, staff also. But I just have a little bit of a problem with the traffic, but that sort of sticks in my craw a little bit. I think that should have been, when they were doing the planning, that should have been looked at a little bit deeper. And I think having a separation in, in Terry Street to augment that traffic, that's not the answer, it's just going to cause a problem, just you're compounding to the problem, you know, and safety is paramount when it comes to traffic and Benita. You know, and I think it's very important for us to say, well, okay, we're going to, we're going to approve everything, but wait on that, you know, that's, I don't know, I just have mixed emotions about that.
If I had the answer to your question with anything resembling facts, I might agree with you, but I don't feel like I can make that decision here. I don't have the facts. I think it's a very exciting proposal, and I think it's very wonderful to imagine that we're going to get off the ground with this vision that they've had for, the council and others have had for downtown for so long. And I guess I wish you well. I think we've addressed all the concerns that I would have had with this. Thank you.
I'll save myself for last.
I, I agree in the, I mean, we have two, we're approving two curb cuts onto Terry Street, and we know that the developer is going to go through the wringer with the city, the state, and everybody else in, in making those things comply. That's not our determination. We don't have the expertise to do that, nor do we have the architectural expertise, I don't think, to say the balconies have to be three feet, four feet, five feet, 10 feet. I think the developer needs the flexibility on Building Four and Building Five to design a building that meets the marketplace. We've established through a set of architectural renderings the general architectural theme of the whole project, as long as that architectural theme is complied with, with all the structures. I think that's warrants our approval, but going beyond that to have seven architects up here telling them what size a balcony has to be, I think is out of our purview.
Thank you. Mr. Brunswick?
I think I've already said pretty much what needs to be said. I ditto what's been said down the line. I just want to, like to see the project get moving.
Right.
And Old 41 get moving. And we start at the north end and we just keep moving south.
Mr. Switzer?
No additional comments.
My only comment would be to, would be to add a condition that the, the applicant has agreed to, that the project be substantially completed within three and a half years. Mr. Theriault?
Yes, I need to add one item, Mr. Chairman, that the motion should include that the recommendation is contingent upon the Terry Street Sub-District Comprehensive Plan Amendment becoming final and effective.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one other question? This is a request of the City of Benita Springs for a fast-track permitting on this, not to, to move forward quickly. Fast-track for the city.
This assumes it gets through the council, of course.
I have one more thing that I neglected to add. It was suggested that the architectural rendering be substantially the same as shown to this board. I would favor such a limitation. Anybody disagree with that? Okay. Mr. Theriault, and do you have anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Vance?
I'm just figuring out where to add that condition.
Can I just ask one question? What happens if the, we put a condition that says this should be substantially finished within three and a half years, and external factors like a collapse in the market or something make that impossible? Where does that put the developer and what, I mean, what, how does one get an exception to this or get enforcement of this or whatever?
Do you want to take a cut or do you want me to take a cut?
I'll let you start on that and I can-
If you have a market that crashes, I've seen a lot of local governments pass a resolution or ordinance to extend timeframes. So there, you could do an amendment to the approval if ultimately there is an approval.
And then I just want to add that the legislature will do it for us, even if we don't want it, there will be, as well as when there's a hurricane or other emergency event, there's a state statute that says we have to allow any development approvals in extra six months plus the time it took.
I just wanted to be certain what, when, if I were to accept this, what the conditions of it would be in the future.
Does that fall under force majeure?
No, I'm, close, but it's a separate, under the Stafford Act, the Florida Legislature adopted that when the governor declares in a state of emergency, if an applicant makes a request for it, we have to provide them with that extra time in their permitting process. So you'll hear more about that in an upcoming case.
I would just add one thing to that comment. The perfect has always been the enemy of the good.
Yes. And if I may, I just want to add that with Chairman, zoning board-
Whatever his name is.
Chair, yeah. Kurlander has stated substantially complete by that time. It doesn't mean finally complete.
Right.
And what is substantially is usually, you know, a couple buildings in the ground and whatever else you see progress being-
That's a word I've seen used in the law.
Yeah. It's a scary word, but it's-
Okay, so we're-
What, what happens if he doesn't make it in three and a half years? What, what do we do to him?
They would come in and ask for an amendment and you would-
Right.
Look at a time extension. We used to allow MCPs to have the ability to be administratively approved for additional time extensions, and we recommended taking that out mainly because of that Stafford Act and the emergency, where, like I said, if there's a recession, we could adopt a resolution or alternatively, we will be forced to have a resolution by a state mandate, and we also have a continuum right now for, for regular emergencies.
Is there anything else from the board? Hearing nothing.
If I can read through where I'm going to make changes to the ordinance, if you'll just abide by that, so I make sure I understand what I need to do. For schedule of uses, I'll be changing it. I'm going to put a header that says Building Three under schedule of uses, so it's very clear. I'm going to also put Restaurants Group Two and Three, not Group One, which I believe is fast food. Is Group One fast food? So Group, it's a Group One, oh, okay. But for Restaurants, and I'll work with Jackie, Group Two and Three, outdoor seating and retail specialty foods is permitted from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. No outdoor seating for operation for consumption on premises after 10:00 p.m. And that's what we've added in a lot of COP languages. And then I'll have the remainder and I'll delete the language where to be deleted out of there. I'll also add a header that says Buildings Four and Five, so that we have those uses, and the applicant did not request changes there. For the mixed uses, the applicant requested deletion of that minimum lot area and dimension in Property Development Regulation B. Am I to delete that?
I think so.
Okay. I want to just make sure. Same thing with the maximum lot coverage language.
Right.
And that would be throughout, and also the deviation, changing it to a 20-foot story setback.
Right.
Make sure. And then also the other residential deletion and other maximum lot coverage. On Item Three, I'm going to make a slight modification. Height of a building is measured from, I'm adding the words measured from, the vertical distance from 18 inches above the adjacent roadway to the eve line. So just for clarification, I will be deleting on Number Four, Number A, and I'll probably put B right into the sentence as opposed to, as follows.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Excuse me, Audrey. That is 18 inches from the crown of the roadway, I think is the language we adopt.
Correct.
Above the adjacent roadway, so it could be crown of the adjacent roadway.
Right.
Thank you. I always have somebody improve on stuff. And then on Four, I'm going to delete as requested by the applicant and merge a sentence. Condition Five, per Chairman Kurlander, I'm changing generally consistent to substantially consistent as far as the architectural. The next change I have is on 12B, and that's a deletion of that, that one strap folio number for the cross-access easement, and that was an applicant request. On her document, it says Six, but it's actually Twelve. I didn't say it was exciting here. I'm also having a condition added, and so it'll be Condition Nineteen or a condition close to. Project should be substantially completed by, in three and a half years. I'll put in a date.
From the, from the date of the, the development order.
From date of development order. Okay, that's good to know. And-
Audrey, if I may interrupt for a moment?
Uh-huh.
There was discussion regarding the order of buildings. Should the ordinance state that which building will be the first building, or do you want to leave that alone?
No, I don't, I don't think we should do that.
I think the applicant has made clear that that's his intent, and if for something, if something happens, that he has to do one of the others first. I don't think that's a terrible problem.
Thank you.
Then the next condition will be, well, the deviations are being recommended for approval. I want to make sure. And then the next change would be on the, won't be on my paperwork, effective date, I'm changing Section Two of the ordinance, you don't have an ordinance in front of you, but you will, consistent with Florida Statute, Section 163, 3184, subsection 12. This ordinance is contingent upon the city enacting the proposed plan amendment transmitted pursuant to Florida Statute, Section 163, 3184. Zoning changes approved by the local government are contingent upon the comp plan or plan amendment transmit, uh, transmittal becoming effective. And that may or may not be relevant by the time we actually get zoning, but I have that in there.
Do you have the part in there about to comply with the general architectural renderings?
Yes.
I do. In the architecture stuff. Now, the language right now reads elevations, but I'm going to be modifying that a little bit more.
Did we have any discussion about the right turn heading out?
The what?
Yes, we did.
As a part of the, as a part of the condition.
I, I thought that at the end of the day, there was no condition or consensus on a condition.
It's not up to us.
There's disagreement on that here.
So if we want to resolve that disagreement, it seems to me we'd have to vote on that specific thing first and then go to this.
Absolutely. So do we have to vote, or could we just, just kind of take it informally? Do you want to put a condition in?
That's what's got to be discussed between the developer, the city, the state.
Okay, so you don't-
I think we were looking at some experts, other experts.
I think the consensus is experts.
Experts.
Jim, I'm sorry.
I will agree.
Okay, that solves that. We're not going to put a condition in on that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's it. The next order of business would be to have a-
Whoa, whoa.
What?
You need to vote.
No, I'm about to do that.
Oh, okay.
And I would like-
Give me a break.
You're going to have to-
Give me a break.
You're going next order of business.
Next order of business is to have a motion to accept the report as modified by council.
I will make that motion.
And I will second that motion.
There's a second. Discussion. There being no discussion, roll call.
Bob and Serpy.
Yes.
Barbara Cragg.
Yes.
Russ Wynn.
Yes.
Chairman Kurlander.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick.
Absolutely.
James Worcester.
Thank you very much.
So the next order of business. Any further public comment? There being none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
One minute, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Masiallo, you and your staff, I want to thank you very much for a job well done, and thank you for investing in our future. And the same goes for our staff. They did a fantastic job.
Thank you so much, and I want to tell you, 50% of my project was designed by your staff by suggestion, but it came out.
That's why we've got a great staff.
They were fantastic to work with.
Thank you.
We know they're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Mr. Chairman, we still have a conundrum on Item Nine on our agenda about, August is off. Is that a true statement?
No, August, August 28th.
Okay, it's going to be the 28th officially.
We changed the date tentatively to August 28th. Is that agreeable with everybody?
It works well.
August 28th?
Yeah.
And if I may, you may have a case. I just wanted to make sure that the August 28th date would be a viable date for all the board, and then I will vet the two dates with the applicant's agent to see if they're also, so it'll be either date.
So it's still contingent.
Correct.
We're all in agreement with August 28th.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
Bob and Serpy.
Yes.
Barbara Cragg.
Yes.
Russ Wynn.
Dave.
Larry Kurlander.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick.
Yes.
James Worcester.
Okay. And that the city's tomorrow.